Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. First of all, thank you for coming. It's been two years since we've been able to host this event. And we're very excited to recognize some educators that have fought through some challenges, and have come out on the other positive side, and have been recognized. Before we get started, I want to recognize some special guests. First of all, our school board, Board Chair, Ms. Tiffany Johnson. Vice Chair, Ms. Sheila Bratton. Mr. Jim Estes. Mr. Cole Young. Ms. Tammy Sharp. Mrs. Claire Maxwell. Mr. Tim Holden. And while we're on the board, I would like to recognize the Secretary of the Board, who helped put this together, Ms. Jennifer Hopkins. And the Secretary and the Director of Schools Office, Mrs. Bell. I'd also like to recognize several other dignitaries here, first of all, starting with our County Mayor, Mr. Bill Kethren. Our Deputy Mayor, Mr. Steve Salmon. Commissioner, Rhonda Allen. Commissioner, Shanto Serena. Commissioner, Pettis Reed. Have I missed, if you're a Commissioner here and I didn't get your name, raise your hand so I can make sure that I'm covering everything. Alright, the final dignitaries I want to introduce are the high school principals who are hanging out at the back by the door. Sorry about that, guys, I had to take a shot at you, okay? First of all, once again, it is a great time to be here, to recognize some fine educators. You know, when I was a freshman in college, how many of you had speech in college, or speech period, raise your hand if you had speech? Well, you know, I was going to give a speech one day, and you know, and I got something like this, now this is gonna take probably 20 minutes, so y'all bear with me, okay? That's not a joke. But anyway, the gentleman said to me, said, "Son, if you're gonna give a speech, I want you to remember three things." He said, "You gotta give a speech just like a comic." Now I said, "Well, what's a comic got to do with it?" First of all, it's got to be very, very dazzling. Second of all, it's gotta be spectacular. But most of all, it's gotta be over before you know it. So that's what this is gonna be. Alright, fellow educators, it is my pleasure and great honor to recognize a group of professionals who have been chosen by their peers as the best of the best in their profession. The last two years have been very challenging for everyone, yet you and your fellow colleagues were not only able to persevere, but you were also able to excel. Along the way, you helped make our school district a Level 5. We had 30 of our schools designated as a Level 5, and we had nine reward schools. There must have been times over these last two years when you felt like throwing in the towel, but you never did it. You remembered your why. You understood that your students were the reason you chose this noble profession. And you were not going to allow anything to prevent you from making a difference in their lives. I would encourage you to treasure what you've acquired these last two years, because it will serve you well as you continue your journey of empowering students to grasp tomorrow's opportunities. Thank you. Now let's get to the most important thing. Ms. Johnson, if you would please come forward. Cheryl Evans, Barfield Elementary School. Ms. Evans has been with Rutherford County Schools 25 years. She has taught at both Barfield and Rockville, spanning grades 2nd through 5th. Ms. Cheryl Evans. Tom McCleary, Blackman Elementary School. Mr. Max, served with Rutherford County Schools for 11 years. He's remained at Blackman Elementary as a physical education teacher. Mr. McCleary graduated from Barry College with a BS in Health and Physical Education. Mr. Tom McCleary. Lauren Hutchins, Blackman High School. Ms. Hutchins has served nine years with the district. She's currently structured spad, setting teacher at Blackman High, but also worked at Stewart's Creek High. Ms. Lauren Hutchins. Sheila Almeida Panther, Blackman Middle School. Ms. Panther has worked 23 years with Rutherford County Schools, currently teaches 6th grade inclusion and math intervention. She's previously taught at Laverne High, where she worked as a resource English and inclusion specialist. Rebecca Koota, Brown's Chapel Elementary. Ms. Koota worked at Brown's Chapel Elementary for five years and teaches special structure setting for grades 3 through 5. Ms. Koota has also taught in Wilson County Schools. Ms. Courtney Carter, Buchanan Elementary School. Ms. Carter has taught in Rutherford County Schools for seven years. Currently, she is a 3rd grade teacher at Buchanan. She previously taught 2nd grade at Buchanan Elementary, as well as 3rd grade at Cedar Grove Elementary. Ms. Courtney Carter. Ms. Kathy Mosley, Cedar Grove Elementary School. Ms. Mosley has worked with Rutherford County Schools for 10 years, and currently teaches specialized setting class at Cedar Grove. She previously worked at Blackman Elementary. Ms. Kathy Mosley. Ms. Jessica Pinson, Central Magnet School. Ms. Pinson has served Rutherford County Schools for 12 years, currently teaches Spanish at Central Magnet School. Her classes include Advanced Honors Spanish, AP Spanish Language and Culture, and Honor Spanish. Ms. Pinson previously taught at Christian Academy of Knoxville. Ms. Jessica Pinson. Ms. Vetter has worked for 32 years with Rutherford County Schools, and currently teaches 3rd grade at Christian Elementary, where she has worked for her entire educational career. Ms. Lori Vetter. You teachers that got 10 years or less in, take it from these career educators. We need you to stay in our schools, we need your help to provide us the way to teach our kids for the next generation. Now, we do know that there's a significant decrease in those going into education. So I hope you can kind of inspire, you know, look at these 30-plus-year-old educators, and see what they've done and the lives they've changed. You know, the other night, I had the opportunity to run into my soon-to-be-30-year-old daughter's kindergarten teacher, who was retiring. So, I mean, keep that in mind, you're special and you're needed. Alright, Ms. Carol Carley Littrell, from Christiana Middle School. Ms. Littrell has taught ELA at Christiana Middle for three years. She previously taught at Jackson Career and Technology Middle School. She has also served as Christiana Middle House Leader, ELA and PLC Lead, and English Department Chair. Ms. Carley Littrell. Ms. Sarah Long, Daniel McKee Alternative School. Alright, next, Ms. Audra MacLeod, David Urie Elementary School. Ms. MacLeod has taught at David Urie for three years. She has previously taught in Chattanooga, South Carolina, and New York. Ms. Audra MacLeod. Next is Ms. Mary Alice Curtis of Eagleville School. Ms. Curtis currently serves as 1st grade teacher at Eagleville. She has also served as Title 1 Aide and 20 years of service with Rutherford County Schools. In addition to Eagleville, she has taught for Murphy's Girl City Schools and worked in the cafeterias in Williamson County Schools. Ms. Mary Alice Curtis. Ms. Unica Maca Hernandez, Holloway High School. Now Holloway knows how to celebrate. Ms. Hernandez has served the Rutherford County Schools for seven years and currently teaches English at Holloway. Ms. Hernandez has also served as an educational assistant at Smyrna West Alternative School. Ms. Unica Maca Hernandez. Ms. Ann S. Mays, Homer Pitter Campus School. Ms. Mays has been with Rutherford County Schools for 19 years and currently teaches 1st grade at Campus School. She previously taught at Stewart's Borough, Smyrna West, in Missouri, and also in Virginia. Ms. Ms. Ann S. Mays, excuse me. Ms. Myra Renee Elliott, John Cornwell Elementary School. They're getting closer to that back door there. Ms. Elliott has taught for Rutherford County Schools for five years and currently teaches 5th grade math, science, and social studies at John Cornwell. She has previously taught in Sparta, Tennessee. Ms. Myra Renee Elliott. Ms. Rebecca Lynn Speck, Kittrel Elementary School. Ms. Speck has taught for Rutherford County Schools for 10 years and currently teaches kindergarten at Kittrel Elementary, where she previously taught 2nd grade. Ms. Rebecca Lynn Speck. Ms. Nishala Allison, Last Cassus Elementary School. Ms. Allison served the district for 18 years and currently teaches 5th grade math and science at Last Cassus Elementary. Prior to Last Cassus, Ms. Allison worked at Oakland Middle School in the 7th grade math teacher, and in Colorado Springs. Ms. Nishala Allison. Next is Mr. Dale Hudson, Laverne High School. Mr. Hudson has taught at Rutherford County Schools for seven years and currently works at Laverne High School as a CTE teacher. He's a Dean of Male Students, a teacher mentor, and is part of the graduation team. Mr. Brian Booney, Laverne Middle School. Mr. Booney has served in Rutherford County Schools for 12 years. He currently is a school counselor at Laverne Middle. He previously worked for 10 years with the Tennessee Department of Children's Services. Mr. Brian Booney. Ms. Jenny Copeland, McFadden School of Excellence. Ms. Copeland currently teaches 1st grade at McFadden, has been with the county for 17 years. She previously taught kindergarten at Barfield, Laverne, and Discovery School. She has served as a teacher for First Methodist Preschool. Ms. Jenny Copeland. Ms. Carol Keener, Oakland High School. I hired Ms. Keener, and Mr. Marshall got all the accolades for hiring her. Ms. Keener currently teaches Advanced Honors English at Oakland High School and has been with the district for four years. In addition to her teaching duties, she's also English Department Chair, English 1 PLC Lead, track coach, cross-country coach, and she previously taught at Warren County High School, where she coached track and cross-country. Ms. Carol Keener. Let me skip one, what's her name? Okay, let me look back. I skipped one, please excuse me. James, those pages, you should have had tabs on them. Page 20? Alright, let's get to page 20. Ms. Melissa Natter, Laverne Lake Elementary School. We definitely don't want to skip you. Ms. Natter has been with Rutherford County Schools for three and a half years and works as a special education teacher. She previously worked for the Department of Defense of Education Activity as autism teacher consultant, and has also worked for James City Council School District as a special education teacher. Ms. Melissa Natter. Alright. Ms. Elizabeth Seiner, Oakland Middle School. Ms. Seiner has worked with Rutherford County Schools for 21 years and currently teaches 8th grade science at Oakland Middle. Previously, Ms. Seiner taught at Central Middle, Stewart's Borough, and Roy Waldron Elementary. She also worked for Woodbine Christian School, Park Avenue Christian School, and Whitehouse Baptist Christian School. Ms. Elizabeth Seiner. Ms. Caitlin Hand, Plainview Elementary. Ms. Hand has served at Rutherford County Schools for four years. She currently teaches 2nd grade at Plainview, and has previously taught in Washington. Ms. Hand also has been involved as a yearbook team leader, ELA curriculum lead, math lead, 2nd grade team lead, and dojo mentor. Ms. Caitlin Hand. Dr. Gagne, you need to find some other people, you're working this lady too hard, okay? Alright, Ms. Laura L. Schlesinger, Rutherford County Virtual School. Ms. Schlesinger has been with Rutherford County Schools for 13 years. She currently teaches at the Rutherford County Virtual School as a 6th through 8th grade teacher. She has previously worked at Blackman Middle, and was a collaborative conference chairperson with the REA, and worked at Smyrna West Alternative School. Before joining Rutherford County Schools, she served as Director of Education at Sylvan Learning Center, and was an adjunct faculty member in MTSU Department of Education. Ms. Laura Schlesinger. Mr. Kyle Hurt, Riverdale High School. Mr. Hurt served the district for 13 years. He's currently a science teacher at Riverdale High School and has taught environmental science, biology, as well as AP versions of those courses. He's a former dean, previously worked with Stones River Battlefield, and as an MTSU graduate teaching assistant. Mr. Kyle Hurt. Ms. Carley Derrick, Rock Springs Elementary. Ms. Derrick has been with the district for 17 years and currently teaches 2nd grade at Rock Springs. Previously, she taught 1st grade at Rock Springs, and has spent her entire career at the same school. Mr. Nathaniel Morris, Rock Springs Middle. Mr. Morris has served for five years at Rutherford County Schools, and he currently teaches science at Rock Springs Middle. He also coaches track and field, and he's the PLC Lead, Curriculum Lead, Department Head, Dean of Students. Is there anything else they can give you? He has previously worked at Wilson County Schools, Mr. Nathaniel Morris. Ms. Kristy Stegall, Rockville Elementary. Ms. Stegall has been with the district for 22 years and currently teaches art at Rockville Elementary. She also has taught at Eagleville, Thurman Francis, where she was Teacher of the Year in 2010. Ms. Kristy Stegall. Ms. Kimberly K. Armstrong, Rockville High School. Ms. Armstrong has served at Rutherford County Schools for 19 years and currently teaches math at Rockville. Additionally, she has served as a math department chair, PLC lead, curriculum lead, mentor new teachers, and part of the ACT committee. She has taught at Smyrna and Blackman Middle, Eagleville, and Father Ryan High School. Ms. Kimberly K. Armstrong. Ms. Caitlin Ray Brown of Rockville Middle School. Ms. Brown has served for 10 years with Rutherford County Schools and currently teaches 7th grade social studies at Rockville Middle, and has previously taught 8th grade social studies and 7th grade reading and writing. Over her career, she has coached cheerleading, softball, and organized softball tournaments. She has many career achievements, including nominations for Outstanding Social Studies Teacher of the Year, a Level 5 teacher for 10 consecutive years, and being selected to Pearson and the Tennessee Department of Education for Data Review Sessions. Ms. Caitlin Ray Brown. And all you middle school principals, that's 10 years at the same school, she's not gonna be attracted to come to your school, so get that out of your mind, okay? Alright, next. Ms. Shamika Edwards, Rocky Fork Elementary School. Ms. Edwards has been with the district for seven years. She currently works 2nd grade teacher at Rocky Fork, but she's also taught at Smyrna Elementary and Roy Waldron. Ms. Shamika Edwards. Ms. Caitlin Benavides, Rocky Fork Middle School. Ms. Benavides has served as Rutherford County School for 12 years, and is a library media specialist at Rocky Fork Middle. She has taught previously 8th grade writing at Rock Springs Middle. She's been a girls soccer coach, track and field coach. Additionally, she taught at Whitworth Buchanan Middle. Ms. Caitlin Benavides. Ms. Emily G. Faust, Roy Waldron School. Ms. Faust has served for five years with Rutherford County Schools and currently teaches 1st grade at Roy Waldron. She previously taught at Christian Elementary. She graduated from Carson Newman with a master's degree in curriculum instruction with an emphasis in special education. Emily G. Faust. Mr. Roger R. Alcindor, Siegel High School. Mr. Alcindor has served the district for eight and a half years. He currently is a senior army instructor at Siegel High School. He has previously worked the same position at Blackman High School. Mr. Alcindor has 25 years of service in the US Army. Ms. Mary Hannah Hardeman, Siegel Middle School. Ms. Hardeman has served with the district seven years and currently is a science teacher at Siegel Middle. Previously, she taught at Spring Hill Middle as an LA and science teacher. Ms. Mary Hannah Hardeman. Ms. Shelley Mangram of Smyrna Elementary School. Ms. Mangram has served the district for 11 years and is currently a 1st and 3rd grade teacher at Smyrna Elementary. Previously, she has worked as an educational assistant for six years in Bedford County. She was in the transportation business before becoming an EA. Ms. Shelley Mangram. This next gentleman, I've known for 48 years. He was a student teacher when I was in 7th grade. Now, he hasn't aged any, but I've taken the toll on me, so let's call him up. Mr. Donald A. Trumpire, Smyrna High School. Mr. Trumpire has been with the district 47 years and currently serves at Smyrna High School as the head swim coach, PE and Wellness Department Head, member of the Smyrna High School Leadership Team, and mentor to new teachers. He's also worked at Thurman Francis Junior High, teaching PE, and serving as the head football coach and the head gymnastics coach. Mr. Donald A. Trumpire. Ms. Jenny Kawano, Smyrna Middle School. Ms. Kawano has taught the district for nine and a half years. She currently teaches at Smyrna Middle School as a special education teacher. Previously, she worked at Stewart's Borough Elementary as an interim teacher. Ms. Jenny Kawano. Ms. Jessie Rutherford, Smyrna Primary School. Ms. Rutherford has served eight years for the district and currently teaches 5th grade at Smyrna Primary School. Previously, she has taught at Cock County Schools and Williamson County Schools. Ms. Jessie Rutherford. Ms. Dana Renee Bennett, Smyrna West Alternative School. Ms. Bennett has 22 years of service with Rutherford County Schools and currently works at Smyrna West Alternative School as an RTI Math and Reading Interventionist and 6th grade ELA teacher. She previously worked at Riverdale, Stewart's Borough, and Christian Elementary, Laverne Primary, and David Urie. Ms. Dana Renee Bennett. Ms. Kavita Lyles, Stewart's Creek Elementary School. Ms. Lyles has served Rutherford County Schools for 16 years. She currently is a school counselor at Stewart's Creek Elementary. She has previously worked at David Urie Elementary, Laverne Primary, Roy Waldron, and Dexter Middle. Mrs. Kavita Lyles. Ms. Allison Haley Glapa, Stewart's Creek Middle School. Ms. Glapa served the district for six years. She currently teaches seventh-grade literacy at Stewart's Creek Middle and is an assistant athletic director. She has also taught and coached at McKenzie Middle. Ms. Allison Haley Glapa. Ms. Brittany May, Stewartsborough Elementary School. Ms. May has served with Rutherford County Schools for three years. She currently works as special education interventionist at Stewartsborough Elementary, but has also worked at Thomas Edison Elementary and Cambridge Elementary. Previously, she taught in Nashville for six years. She is currently the lead teacher for Stewartsborough Elementary. Ms. Brittany May. Ms. Mary Jennifer Reeves, Thurman Francis Arts Academy. Ms. Reeves has served in Rutherford County Schools for 24 years. She currently works at Thurman Francis as a first-grade classroom teacher. Previously, she worked at Laverne Primary, as well as Roan County Schools. Ms. Jennifer Mary, excuse me, Ms. Mary Jennifer Reeves. Ms. Molly Swan, Walter Hill School Elementary. Ms. Swan has served the district for 12 years. She currently works as an integrated preschool teacher at Walter Hill Elementary. Ms. Swan has also worked at Roy Waldron as an intervention teacher and has experience at Murphill City Schools in the Extended School Program. Mrs. Molly Swan. I've actually been in this next gentleman's classroom, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I was blown away of how he gets his students engaged. This gentleman is a star, and we need to do everything to keep him in our system. Not that we don't need to keep all of you in our system, but this one in particular. Mr. Joshua Caleb Pickleseiner, Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Mr. Pickleseiner has served Rutherford County Schools for three and a half years. He currently works at Whitworth Buchanan as a seventh-grade social studies teacher. He has been a PLC Lead at Whitworth, social studies department head, and was the Rutherford County Teacher of the Month. Mr. Joshua Caleb Pickleseiner. Ms. Shannon Marie Creekmore, Wilson Elementary School. Ms. Creekmore has served with Rutherford County Schools for 14 years. She currently works as a third-grade teacher at Wilson. She previously worked at Lancaster Christian Academy. Ms. Shannon Marie Creekmore. This concludes our teachers that we've recognized, so let's give them all a big hand. Now, we're gonna name some district-wide recipients, named Principal of the Year, Ms. April Snead. Ms. Snead came to Whitworth Buchanan from Rockville Middle School where they had had tremendous success, and she brought it along with her. She established a very good culture, and has continued establishing a culture. If there's any parents who has children, that they haven't gone to Whitworth Buchanan, they've gone to maybe some other school, let me tell you, this is where you need to go if you live in that zone. Thank you, Ms. Snead. All right, this next gentleman, I've known him probably, I don't know, at least 20 years, and I can't get his name, last name correct. And he never corrects me. Man, I love that. But his name is Mr. Mark Gullion. Mr. Gullion took over the direction of our Title I, Title II facilitator, or excuse me, coordinator. He's the one that deals with the federal funding, and he's done a fabulous job. When he took on the task of this Esser, it's a huge task, and he's done a fabulous job, and I can't say enough good things about him, I just hope he never leaves us, okay? And now, for all that you've waited for, we're gonna name our district level at each grade band, Teacher of the Year. First of all, we'll start with Elementary School. Ms. Shannon Marie Creekmore, Wilson Elementary. Congratulations, Ms. Creekmore. Middle-level Teacher of the Year, Caitlin Benavides. All right, just give her a hand. And our last recipient is Ms. Jessica Penson, Secondary Level Teacher of the Year from Central Magnet School. All right. We do appreciate all of you coming out to recognize our teachers. It has been a challenging two years, but let me say this, there's some positive stuff that's been going on in our schools. Don't listen to the narrative that everything is coming out, that you're getting coming out of the media. There's some great things going on in our schools, and it's because of these teachers that are sitting here, these administrators that are in here, these instructional coaches, all this system we have. One of the things we understand is that it's all about the kids, and we do make mistakes from time to time. However, I'm gonna be honest with you, 99.9% of our people understand it's about our kids, and they want to make a difference in the lives of our kids. Now, I'm gonna be leaving my position, but I'm not gonna be leaving Rutherford County 'cause I have two grandchildren in our school system, and I have one will be in pretty soon. So I gotta be with him 'cause he's the one that's gonna have to have me mentor him a little bit, but anyway. But I do appreciate all you guys coming out, and this will be the conclusion of our ceremony here. Thank you.